Wow, full house. This is great. I'll call the meeting to order. And could you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please remain standing for our invocation. Tonight Jared Smaut from the Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints, the Fountain Hills Ward is here with us tonight. Welcome and thank you for coming.
Our Father in Heaven, as we come before thee this evening, we are grateful for this opportunity we have to gather together as a community, as family, as friends, and ask for thy Spirit to be with us as we discuss issues pertinent to our community and to our lives. We pray that we can show the respect that is necessary for a productive meeting, that we can value each other's opinions and thoughts, and that we can move forward productively. We are grateful for all that thou has blessed us with, this great town that we have to enjoy, the people that reside within it. There's a special Spirit amongst those that live here, and we are grateful to associate with all of them, and pray that any issues that may divide us can be resolved and we can be one, as thy Son prayed we might. We ask for these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you. Could I ask everyone to remain standing for a moment? Former Mayor Wally Nichols, as some of you know, is gravely ill in the hospital, and I wonder if I can ask you all for a moment of silence to pray for his recovery. Can please be seated. Alan, could you mute your phone, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you mute your phone until you want to speak? Otherwise we can hear everything you're doing. Roll call, please, Beth.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lejeune?
Here.
Councilmember DePorter?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Yates?
Present.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
And Councilmember Magazine?
He's here. All right. Okay, first is the proclamation, and this is for Fountain Hills Day of Prayer. Whereas the town of Fountain Hills will join together with the entire country on May 5, 2016, to celebrate the 65th anniversary of the National Day of Prayer. And whereas Congress by Public Law 100-307 has called on our citizens to reaffirm the role of prayer in our society and to honor the religious diversity that our freedom permits by recognizing a national day of prayer. And whereas we are ever mindful of the heroic men and women of our armed forces, especially those serving abroad and in harm's way. And whereas we pray for God's blessings, for our governments at town, state, and national levels, to shower us with strength and wisdom in order to meet the challenges before us, and to work together to bring hope for our community, and to enhance the well-being of all citizens and families of Fountain Hills. And whereas, and we pray for strength and divine direction in our educational systems, community, businesses, media, and other places of worship. And whereas uniting in prayer gives all people of faith, regardless of their denomination or religion, an opportunity to join fellow citizens in celebrating the power and love of God and our perpetual responsibility to him and to others. Now therefore I, Lynda M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim, May 5, 2016, as Fountain Hills Day of Prayer. Thank you. Okay. Next up is Economic Development Report. That's me again, and I have two-meeting short report. MAG's EDC meeting pretty much centered around baseball spring training. Eight-hundred-and-nine million is brought into the state every year from spring baseball. This is an enormous economic impact for our state. Even though we don't have a spring training facility here in town, we do reap the benefits of the season through our hotels and tourism. The new big push during the season will be to invite CEOs of major companies that are located in the baseball home state to come to Arizona for the games, and then to tour the area, hopefully presenting a great package of advantages as to why they should move their company here. I attended Mayor's update meeting put on by Central Arizona Project, our cap water supplier for our area. I put this in EDC instead of just a visit because the implications of a future drought will certainly impact our economic development, which they discussed in detail. We also got some extensive background on their groundwater replenishment and underground storage, which is also a vital part of any future water shortages. They certainly weren't trying to alert us, but just to inform us that they are looking into possible ways to curtail the shortage, but also making plans for what to do in case it actually happens. Grady and I had a very productive meeting with the new President of Fort McDowell, President Bernardine Burnett. This meeting was just the beginning of working together with our neighbor on events, projects, tourism, and all-around support for both of our communities. And that's my EDC report for today. Next up, okay, you ready? We have recognition of the Fountain Hills High School Lady Falcons and Coach Mayberry for winning the Division III State Soccer Championship for the second time in three years. Grady, did you, Grady, were you going to, were you saying something about it, or is that, is that going to go to Mark?
Just wanted to just say that on behalf of the town and the staff, we're very pleased with your accomplishment. This is something that doesn't happen very often with, with sports, particularly high school sports, to have this type of accomplishment, so congratulations to you. We do have a presentation that the mayor will be making as she approaches the podium down below.
Mark, will you kind of come up and join us? I have, huh, it's under here. Just part of it. Well, does the team want to come up? Come on up. This is for you. This is your big moment. Come on. Everybody come up and kind of get together, too, because we're gonna, we're gonna take a picture. We're gonna ask Ryan to take a picture, okay? So we have this certificate to give you, okay? And if you can hold that, but we also have a surprise right there. Any idea what it is? Well, you are the Falcons, right?
It's a communist.
Very heavy. So this we are presenting to you, this Falcon, for your school, and give him a good home.
Thank you so much.
And Ryan's gonna take a picture. Everybody look that way. Give him a good home. Okay, next up, we got an update by Director Shelley Mory regarding the Fountain Hills Coalition accomplishments, findings from the focus group, and a special recognition of MCSO School Resource Officer Jill Osher. Welcome, Shelley.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you Town Council for allowing us to be here. Really appreciate you giving us the opportunity, because we want to continue the celebration here of success. And we really, truly is an honor and a pleasure to be able to be here tonight and share with you some of the accomplishments. And if I can, just a moment, just recognize those in the crowd that are affiliated with the Coalition. We have, if you would please stand, we have sector leaders, members of our Board of Directors, we have staff. Please stand up, Ryan, you too, back in the media. And so these are really the people that help keep our mission in motion, and so I'd just like to recognize them for making our work possible, because without them, it would not be possible. So thank you very much. And you guys can stand. So what I did is, you have a sheet in front of you, basically taking a look at the past year. And quite honestly, most of the accomplishments on the document were completed within the last seven months. And so taking a look at, because it's very interesting here in that Coalition, that Fountain Hills is such a special place, we have so many partners that come together to help us in our mission. And as you see in terms of capacity, we have 26 active members representing 12 different sectors. Last year, we had 52 businesses that helped us promote our Text2Tip program. Overall, 256 businesses in the community have supported this program. And local businesses fund at 100% our essay contest, and which is just truly amazing, and I wanted to put those on the sheet for you so that we could recognize some of those amazing local businesses that, that help us. In fact, it's interesting, Dr. Sweeney, we used to have our meetings over at the Fountain Hills Unified School District, just in the conference room there, and our meetings have gotten so large, he said, Shelley, we gotta move. So we moved over into the Learning Center, and it's a little bit more, we have a little bit more elbow room, because we really were a fire hazard, and we didn't want to get anyone in trouble. So, so we've had to move over there. Our Safe Homes Network, which is where a parent can call, and that's where you take a pledge to have an alcohol-free home, and that you won't allow illegal drug use. We have 380 members. We've had parents here pick up 15 early-action drug testing kits. That's where they can pick them up anonymously at five locations. Thanks to the media, to Ryan, we've, and Mike Charneau, the past editor there, our newspaper articles, we've had 14, that helps us get the word out, and also on our public service advertisement placement. And then the schools, really is key also. Schools with, you know, Mr. Brennan, and our high school partnerships, and with Anita Gomez at the middle school. We have a club called Above That. So that means living above the pressure, living, making your own decisions, and living above the hype. And so we've had a number of lunch promotions, 75 kids at each of those, averaging 25 students per meeting. That's an after-school meeting that they volunteer to come to, so that's an amazing turnout. We have a support group that maybe you're not even aware of at our high school, that's offered to kids that are struggling or have challenges. It's called Empowered. And last year, there were six juniors that they didn't know if they were going to make it or not to graduate, and this year, they're all graduating. So thanks to that great program. For our essay and poster contest, we had about 171 essay contest participants, 114 entries in our poster contest. And the next bullet there, that Arizona Youth Survey, that's where the rubber meets the road for us. That's where we see, are we truly moving the needle in the right direction? Are fewer kids in Fountain Hills using substances? And it also keeps our finger on the pulse. What are we watching for? What trends are we going to be looking for? Some of our focus group results from the Mayor's Youth Council said that we really got to keep our eye on marijuana. Not only is marijuana now more available in our town than ever before, kids really have this perception that it's much safer than alcohol. Fifty percent of our kids don't see any harm in smoking marijuana on a regular basis. When we see that type of attitude, we know that use goes up. Also, with MCSO and law enforcement, Captain Laterno, the whole crew at MCSO has just been amazing. They watch our Text2Tip program, and we had 119 Text2Tips last year, 23 from the school, 96 from the community, and two arrests. They've been just fantastic with our RX Take Back and Collection. The Arizona Attorney General's Office, because our box was too small and the handle broke off because people were trying to stuff their medications in there, donated a new box for us, and thanks to MCSO and the town, and Mr. Miller, and the, and the mayor on allowing us to put it in there, it's bigger and better. And so if you take a look, we estimate about 10 pounds per month, 120 pounds per year, that's 120,000 pills out of our medicine cabinets and away from our kids. So that's amazing. Our next turn-in date is April 30, and again, there'll be a turn-in at Fort McDowell, at their tribal police location, and also right here. And then last but not least, the town here. And I say the best for last, and I'll tell you, truthfully, we haven't agreed on everything, right? When I've been standing here at the podium, but that's okay. We respect your process, and we respect that you are here to run the town as best that you see fit, and we just respect your process and allowing us to work with you. Taking a look at, at Mr. Mayor, it's just been great, allowing us to promote our Text2Tip program through Fountain Hills Park and Trash Cans there, and Four Peaks Park yet to come. And then we have that new larger prescription drug drop box. We've held 17 events, 1,700 parents, community members. And so really, truly, this is a community effort. When we talk about prevention, it's not to stop people from doing things, it's to promote a healthy, safe community for our kids. And that's exactly what's being accomplished here, really at an amazing level. So I just appreciate this time. And one other thing, someone else who's going above and beyond, and that's Deputy Jill Ochner. So Jill, come forward, please. And I sent each of you an individual message within the last week, talking specifically about her amazing work. While it is evident to all of us in the Coalition that what she does is so important, I really thought that she was deserving of a special honor. We have a difference-maker award, and you all read the letter, so I won't go over it again, but again, she is a woman that goes above and beyond every single time for our kids, and is with honor, pleasure, and just, I'm so humbled to be able to award you this. You Make a Difference presented to Deputy Jill Ochner from the Fountain Hills Coalition, and so.
Hold on.
You're a true hero.
Madam Mayor, even though we might know the story, could you please share with everyone? Because it's, it's a good story.
Okay, so the story is that there was a student that showed up on campus at our middle school, who was under the influence of alcohol. And with that, Deputy Ochner found out who actually supplied the alcohol to the girl, and where they obtained the alcohol. So on her own time, outside of her duties as School Resource Officer, she went and she talked to, there were two retailers where the child was getting alcohol. So she went to both of those retailers, she talked to the store managers, and had a great conversation, said, here's who it is, here's what they're doing, be on the lookout for them. And so she even went back and looked at surveillance tape at one of the, at one of the locations, one of the retailers, one of the stores, and the manager said, I saw that kid. I saw that person here, and I'm going to keep a lookout for them when they come in. And I, I want to tell you, I want to report tonight, that Maria just went into one of those outlets today, and the manager said, now when the kids come in, we make them take off their backpacks and put them here by the front door. So again, already, she's made the change. We have a safer community because of her actions, and she has prevented, this kid was going and getting a lot of booze from two locations, and it could have been tragic to have a middle schooler on campus drunk. She did the right thing, she took extra steps, and we're safer because of it. So thank you.
And Shelley, you're doing a fabulous job leading this group. I know how hard you work, and you've brought so many other people together since the Coalition started, so many other groups, and you certainly deserve credit for all the success for the Coalition. So thank you. All right. Now we have an update by Strategic Planning Advisory Commission Chair Dana Sarr regarding the Vision Fountain Hills survey. Dana?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here to also celebrate some successes that we've had. The Vision Fountain Hills team has really worked hard. They meet every Wednesday morning for two to four to five hours in some cases, and have reached the point at which we're getting ready for our May 7 workshop. I'm proud to say that we got over 2,000 responses from the survey, from members of the community, both local residents and visitors. Amazing responses that you have in front of you. A couple of things I just want to bring your attention to before we spend the entire night talking about all the details, we'll do that at a later time, but the interesting thing is that we asked a question about what kind of town does the community want this to be? Could it be a re-invertive seniors' town that we're trending to with our age group? I always say that when I came here 35 years ago, I was the average age. I still am. But respondents said, 94% of the respondents said they want to be a residential community with a diverse complement of families, seniors, and businesses. So great place to start from. Also, in your materials, I'll just identify one area that I think is important for the Council to know, and also the Commission, and I'll get to the Commission in a bit. The number-one strategic priority that was identified in the survey is investing in the town's long-term economic growth. And I think the mayor and most of anybody involved in it knows that that is an important goal for the community, is to make this a more economic, sustainable town. Number two, attract more families and working professionals as full-time residents. We know that retailers and other businesses in town that rely on the population are seeing the decline in the number of people who spend the year here and use this as their major source of, of time. Number three is expand enrollment and quality of the Fountain Hills School District. I realize that that's not a role that the Council plays. We are working with the school district to make sure that they are sustainable as well. Ensure the maintenance of the town's infrastructure is our number-fourth item. We know that there are some major needs in infrastructure. We just recreated Swallow Boulevard to the tune of about $8 million for 16 lane miles, so we know that there's a huge demand for keeping our roads and streets and other buildings like this in, in good order. And finally, number five, preserve the financial stability of town services. We know that the town and the staff provide services that are essential to any community. We want to make sure that in the next strategic plan, we have a plan to keep those services available to our residents. Again, I'm not going to go through the whole thing. You've got it all. I invite all the council members and, and staff to attend the May 7 meeting. There will be food. It is an all-day event. It starts at 8 o'clock in the morning, and will go till about 4:00. We'd like to have the school board as well, and we'd like to have both the Council and the school board come as visitors to really walk the discussion, to listen to what discussions are going on. If there's specific questions that you could respond to, we will track you down. But I really feel it's important that we get the 120 members of the community there to have a, an open and frank discussion about how we get there. Remember, we're looking at three different elements. Where we are now, we did that about a year ago, actually. Where we want to go, that's what this survey was designed to tell us. And our final item is how do we get there? So we hope that this meeting, this workshop on May 7 will provide the answers to that, and that will then go to the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission. They've kind of had some time off here in the last year as Vision Fountain Hills has done their work. The party's over. We're looking at meeting on a fairly regular basis, once a week, once every two weeks as a commission or as a subset of the commission, to put the document together so that we can get it to you sometime in mid-fall. That's our goal. I would encourage you, and other members of the Commission are working on it as well, to replace the missing board or commission member. It's important that we have a full slate of seven commissioners, because there is so much work. We're also going to invite those members of Vision Fountain Hills and others who would like to help us on the subgroups to put the words together in the document that you will receive. So I look forward to the next month as we wrap up the Vision Fountain Hills and move on to the actual Commission's work. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is, is the workshop still open for anybody who wants to take part?
Um, let me turn around and ask that question.
Yes?
The answer is yes.
And they just go to the website to sign up?
There's a website. If you have any trouble getting on the website, because we actually closed it a week ago, give somebody a call.
You?
I'm obviously someone you can call, and we'll get them in. Jerry Butler, and go on the website, you can find our names. Let us know. It's a $10 fee to cover the cost of food, and, and we're looking for a full day of discussion.
Okay. Well, I know how hard your group has worked so far, and you don't look a day older because of it. Don't worry about that.
I'll look for you next time, too.
On behalf of everybody here, we want to thank you for all the work, and for your team that's done some great work. You've certainly put a whole lot of time into this, and I know this is going to really be of value to us and the community, so thank you.
Thank you. If I could have the team stand up, as long as?
The team is standing in the back. Okay.
They have worked hard, and we've got work to do. We're looking forward to some time off as a Vision Fountain Hills, but I think we need to be really ready to go when it comes to the Commission's work, so that we can bring something to you by the fall.
Okay, go ahead.
Dana, congratulations on your team's hard endeavor and work, and the great results. And as well, congratulations to you on your personal news.
Oh, thank you. It's about time, right?
Personal news. Do we get to now?
Yeah, I'm getting married.
Oh, just that?
Your fiance is going to watch this.
Oh, just that, uh-huh. Yeah.
Next, next spring, so.
Wow, congratulations.
After 60-some years, it's probably time.
All right. Wow, that deserves another round of applause. Vice Mayor?
Dana, congratulations. I know this was something you envisioned when you came on Strategic, the Strategic Plan Group, and I know you shared that with Council a number of times, and we've talked about it a lot, and a lot of it had to do with process, and it's just awesome to see that you guys put together an awesome process, and you have a product, and you'll be discussing that with the community, and hopefully validating all of that. And then we look forward to your, your final recommendations and ultimate implementation, where, as we all know, the rubber will, will meet the road. But putting that aside, nice job. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any calls to the public? No? Okay, we'll go on to our consent agenda. We have eight items. Can I get a motion to accept as written?
Go move.
Mayor's second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And a roll call vote on that, please?
Councilmember DePorter?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
He's on mute.
He's on mute. Alan?
Wake up, Alan.
Vice Mayor Lejeune?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
I will recuse myself from my [inaudible].
I couldn't find the mute button.
One, two, three, and five, aye.
Okay. And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor 7-0.
Cynthia, maybe you can help him with that? Show him where the mute button is? Okay, now you can mute it again. Okay. All right. Now we'll start our regular agenda items. I have an announcement before we get started. At this time, item number nine has been removed from the agenda. So we will go into number six, starting with that. Discussion with possible directions to staff regarding a possible community garden. And Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the item before you is a request for a community garden by a community group led by Dr. Patel. There's been quite a bit of history on trying to develop this, and it's gone to a point where there's, it's at a decision point for the Council. So I'll go ahead and turn it over.
At this time, item number nine has been removed from the agenda. So, we will go into number six, starting with that. Discussion with possible direction to staff regarding a possible community garden. And Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the item before you is a request for a community garden by a community group led by Dr. Patel. There's been quite a bit of history on trying to develop this, and it's gone to a point where there's, it's at a decision point for the council. So, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mark Mayer, our Community Services Director, who will provide a little bit more background before introducing Dr. Patel so she can go ahead and do her presentation to you.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. As the town manager indicate, this is not a new item. It's an item that has become increasingly more popular, not only nationally, but it's been discussed at the council and staff level several times previously. I'm pleased to sit here in front of you tonight. I think based on the information that Dr. Patel has shared with us and what you've seen in the newspaper, the group's made significant progress, which is what brings them here for direction from you this evening. As I indicated, it's a national trend. We've seen some of that. We have our own farmer's market. It's grown from one to two now in our community. This perhaps is the next step in that process as everybody looks towards sustainability and healthier ways of living as well as widespread to the community. There have been a number of volunteer meetings, which Dr. Patel will go into. They're seeking the use of the town site that is adjacent to the library, that has existed in its current condition for at least 15 years. And the staff is supportive of their request to potentially use that as a site with access potentially for both water, electricity that's readily available adjacent to the site. So, I join them this evening in recommending to you at the staff level, after meeting with Dr. Patel, that the mayor and the town manager also attended. We made it very clear to Dr. Patel that based on the financial situation of the town as well as our department, we did not have the staff or the resources to be able to run the garden, so it really needs to be a grassroots effort. They indicated, and certainly everything we've seen since, it has demonstrated that they're willing to take, so to speak, the bull by the horns and run with it. So, with that, I would turn it over to Dr. Patel unless you have any questions or need.
Mark, if I may, too. As the staff report indicates, the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association has also signed on as a sponsor and also would be helping with the fundraising in terms of being the, I guess, the fiscal agent for that.
Correct. Then the 501(c)(3) status that goes along with it for collection of donations, et cetera.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you so much, Mayor Kavanaugh, esteemed town council members, our town clerk, our town attorney, town manager, Mark Mayer. And I'm very grateful to have this audience, so thank you so much. I'd like to first recognize the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association for being our parent organization and helping us get this grassroots of effort off the ground. So, thank you so much for supporting us. Also, I want to thank the residents of Fountain Hills who have taken the time this evening to come and show support. If I can have them raise their hands or stand up for me, that'd be wonderful. Thank you, thank you.
That's all you wolf you are.[785.41][785.41](Laughter).
So, I'd like to get to the presentation if we can turn down the lights and I can go through our presentation. So, Fountain Hills Community Garden. A community garden is a green space that is worked on by a group of volunteers in our town. It inspires the growth of fruits and vegetables, creates a center of education, social service, and community spirit. Our vision, these residents, these grassroots operation that we've created, is to create a garden where there'll be a gathering place where residents can connect with their mind, body, and spirit through contact with nature, physical activities, and social interactions. It can offer a quiet and restful garden setting for the enjoyment of the natural world of plants, birds, insects, and soil. It'll be an intergenerational place where master gardeners can share their master wisdom about water conservation, progressive gardening techniques, composting with young children and adults. It can be a place where young students learn about service and giving back to the community, and seniors can find a place to belong and a sense of purpose. We plan on creating an organic and fruit vegetable garden that can be also used to donate food to food banks, shelters, and help underserved families. We've created some proposed programs, and we plan on doing this in phases. We'd like to create cooperative garden beds. These would be raised handicap accessible beds for a joint community growing experience where children and adults can work together and grow a variety of vegetables. We want to have educational workshops. Learning centers led by master gardeners will allow persons of all ages to learn the basics of gardening, composting, soil, seasons, and plants. We want to create a kids' learning garden, a place where children can learn to grow with using imaginative play, free exploration of the soil, plants, along with formal, hands-on curriculum-based gardening programs. We want to have individual lots, especially for families that are interested in having their own garden. These lots will be available for rent by community members. They can create their own expression with recycled materials, raised beds, vertical gardens. We want to start a food donation group as well, a partnership with local churches, food banks, shelters, and volunteer programs to provide organic produce to those in need. This can be a place of art display. Our town is known for its art display and our art festivals. This can offer a place for art walk, sculptures, musical performances, cultural activities. It can create a place of gathering, and it can connect us to the main part of our downtown. Creating tree orchards, creating reflection gardens, hummingbird feeders, bee programs, composting, using resources to conserve water, these are all things that the garden can offer. So, how does a community garden enhance our community? It becomes a place and a reason for families to move to our town, rank in the top places to raise a family in Arizona with an eco-preserving, energy-conscious, forward-thinking community. Our town schools will lead by example and become a role model for other schools in our district. We can provide a source for healthy, organic foods to our community, improve the health of our young families and our senior community with a safe, green space to find purpose, nutrition, and activity. So, you ask, what do we have so far? We have a parent nonprofit organization, the Greening Committee under the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association, has offered to help us create a place where we can have a webpage, where we can gather donations, where we can have places where we can direct our interested volunteers. We have interest from over 100 local volunteers since we started this project again, service groups, businesses, the Fountain Hills School Superintendent, Chamber of Commerce, the ASU's Global Institute of Sustainability has actually given us students to work in the garden. And the Maricopa Masters Gardener Program has really supported this program, and we've had several master gardeners as part of our group. We have collaborations with other social service and education groups in Fountain Hills. We have fundraising through local and national grant programs that we're planning. We have community efforts so far through residents, businesses, and Girl Scouts. So, how are we planning on paying for this project? This is 100% volunteer effort with over 100 residents supporting this project. We have a landscape architect, and if you have not admired and looked at her design, Angela, I'd like her to stand up for me. She has created a wonderful project.[1087.83][1087.83](Applause). So, thank you for volunteering your services for the garden. We have engineers, we have master gardeners, we have contractors that have had interest in this project. We have created a five-team approach. We have five teams with five volunteer leaders. We have an administration team, a construction team, a garden design team, and fundraising and marketing team. We have volunteers designated to these groups, and we've had several meetings between the leaders and the garden volunteers to create a project plan. We have fundraising efforts that we're planning. We've created applications for grants from Safeway, SRP, Republic Services. We're applying for national grants through community gardens, American Community Gardening Association. We have partnerships with Fry's and Bash's. We're seeking donations from individuals, groups, and businesses. We're planning fundraisers to raise awareness and donor support. We feel like we can generate revenue through gardening classes, hosting events, collecting membership fees, and lot lease fees. We plan on partnering with other local organizations with similar vision and sharing expenses. We know that there's been interest for this lot through other organizations. We've spoken to the River Time Museum, we've spoken to the Botanical Gardens. We know that the Astronomy Club has interest. We want this to be a collaborative town effort. Anyone, any other organization wanting to improve the town's vision is going to be part of our group. So, we want this to be a collaborative effort. So, what are we asking you for? How can the town of Fountain Hills support this program? First of all, we need your support. Do we have your support?
All on paper?[1191.73][1191.73](Laughter).
Second, in order for us to do anything with fundraising, and if you've ever been a part of any project, you will know how crucial this is. In order to have any donors take us seriously, we need to have a place to ground this garden. And so, this project has to have a location, and we're asking you to consider the land across from the library museum to be part of this project. We've asked other communities how they've done this. We've gone to Mesa, we've gone to Gilbert, we've gone to Scottsdale, and a lot of the towns that have supported community gardens have allowed them to lease the lot for a minimum of $1 a year. So, that is what we're asking for. This lot will be developed in phases and in collaboration with other educational and service-related organizations in the town to host an area of public interest, tourism, education, and recognition. Second, we need a water supply. The lot currently has access to water from a capped-off main off of Alago. We're asking the town to provide a water meter to the lot. If the town uses this property in the future for other projects, they will have invested this, they would need to have invested in at least this much, and obviously the water meter will already be in place for them. I've attached to your handout an email and a quote from Abkor Water for a water meter. I did some research, and I found other gardens that have the same size garden as us using a 1.25. So, we'll be asking the town to support us with a 1.5 meter. This is the lot. And we would like the town for their support of the garden, a lease for the use of the town lot for $1 a year, and a water meter to be installed at the lot. Again, I appreciate your time and your interest today. Thank you so much. To plant a garden is to believe in tomorrow. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Patel.[1310.13][1310.13](Applause).
Any questions?
I'm sure there are. And I had shared with Dr. Patel that my husband and I have been on the list, the waiting list, at Scottsdale Community College, which also has a community garden. We've been on that waiting list for years. I said, and I don't think we're ever going to make it, this is the only way we're going to get a little piece of a garden, and I have it right here. It's much better, absolutely much better. Did you want to make a statement also?
You had to ask me to speak to support her efforts. I'm Rita Applegate. Many of you may already know me. I've worked for the last, well, since '09, part-time at our local Verde Valley Nursery, but I'm also a master gardener. But I feel like I have so much to share, and I want to be a part of this. I'm very inspired by it. We have a great deal of support. Gives us an opportunity to really have a hands-on type of thing that is unique, one of a kind. And I thank everybody here that came to support us, and I can see that with you guys, and I just thank you for your consideration and your support and time.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the council for Dr. Patel, Vice Mayor?
Just a comment. You know, a number of us have heard talk about a community garden in this community for a long time, and I know the Greening Group has discussed that in the past. And Dr. Patel, I know how humble you are, but I must say, your leadership on this has been extraordinary, and I want to thank you for that. I have a daughter right now that's serving in Peru at about 8,500 feet in a village doing very similar projects, so I'm very selfishly hoping she will come back soon so I can see her and she can help with the effort as well. But you've done a tremendous job in leading this effort, putting this presentation together, your email correspondence, and networking with SRP and all the things you've done. So, thank you, and no pun intended, but we're looking for your seeds to come to fruition here very soon. Thank you.[1438.73][1438.73](Laughter).
Councilman DePorter?
I was just going to add, you did do an amazing job of crowd raising. It was tremendous, the campaign you put together and your leadership to Vice Mayor LaChee's point. I mean, we, for me, Dr. Patel means so much to my family. I mean, she's in charge of the wellness of my entire family and everyone that I know. And I know you care a lot about the community. I know this is something we talked about, we've been talking about for a long time. And I just want to just thank you profusely for putting it together and lining yourself up with, thank you, with the FHCCA and the Greening Groups that are just fantastic. So, thank you so much for what you've done.
All right. Councilman Yates?
Excellent job. Again, I can't say enough. Sustainability, you're hitting all the marks, community involvement. This comes in handy because the more, as you know, the more participation our residents have, the more they feel part of the community. So, absolutely huge. I may be saying this the wrong way. Is this the only amount you need?
Oh.[1507.33][1507.33](Laughter).
And then, secondly, you haven't really done a timeline, so if you could speak to that effect. I'm a developer, and we always have a timeline, so if you could share us?
Absolutely. Very good questions. So, when I was first, when I first met with Mark Mayer, you know, the first thing he warned me about was that this is something that has been breached before. He told me there were two things that the project lacked, town support and funding. He said, you got to start there, and thank you so much because that's what-
He cautioned you, he didn't warn you.[1542.73][1542.73](Laughter).
He cautioned me. He encouraged me. So, what we, what our timeline is doing now is we rallied up resident support. So, that was the first thing. We've started up looking at fundraising. That's the second thing. We have a timeline and a project plan in place that we're working on. So, the next step for us, because this is very early on, we've had two garden meetings, and we've had a few team leader meetings. So, our next step in this whole thing is to try to create a scope of work. In order to create a scope of work, we need like-minded people to come together to figure out what is the materials that we need to have. So, having meetings with contractors, having meetings with landscapers, having meetings with master gardeners. We have a visit to the Botanical Gardens. They invited us to their community garden to visit with them. So, we've got this big field trip on Monday that we're doing. You know, we've communicated with Mesa Urban Garden. So, right now, we're in the gathering stages of information. As soon as we have a scope of work, we'll start creating, getting bids from contractors, creating a budget, and then creating a timeline. So, we haven't quite gotten to that part yet because we're still in the gathering of information stage. May I ask someone to speak on that? Would you mind?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Susan Mitchell. I'm relatively new to Fountain Hills. I've been here less than a year, and I'm in the Master Gardener Program. My background includes a considerable amount of work on projects, both legislative, construction, all sorts of things in the last 30 years. And so, my volunteering is to help the team create the timeline, create the budget, create a fundraising plan, and that sort of thing.
All right. Thank you. I think we have some speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker card from Tate Elke. We do have three speaker cards. They did not want to speak, but they wanted the council to know they supported this agenda item.
Okay. Thank you.
Tate Elke?
Mayor, I'm not sure, do we have the camera? I'm not sure if you're seeing this diagram since this point. May I turn this over?
Sure. Absolutely.
Maybe Mike can get a shot of that so you can see it a little better. More of us out here than them.[1677.13][1677.13](Laughter). We watch it later in the video.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. If I was counting votes, I'd say this is probably a 7-0, but I haven't heard from Councilmember Magazine on the telephone. But one of the other things, Councilman Yates, you said, what else, you know, is going to be needed? Because often you hear, we just need this. We're talking a little less than $2,000. And I think that's, you know, certainly something the council can find in the budget, right? I see the town manager nodding his head, so he's got it somewhere.
That's a hat.
Is that what it is? That's a hat. But, you know, a little less than $2,000. But I think something else would be assistance in prepping the site. Need some grading and leveling. These are going to be, as Dr. Patel mentioned, above ground. And what's important with that, too, is that it's going to be able to be moved and adjusted if an opportunity were to arise. I know there's been some talk about expanding the museum, doing different projects in that area, a cultural and civic center, that sort of thing. So, this doesn't prevent that from happening. This is, as Dr. Patel says, brings those things together. So, I think that that's important to note. So, any assistance that the council can extend or the town can extend with respect to prepping the site, I think that would be helpful because I know that that's going to be a bit of a project. I'm looking at you, Councilmember Brown, the contractor on the dais.
I've already been contacted.
I figured, I figured as much. Dr. Patel, you know, you can't sing enough graces about what she's done in a very, very short period of time. The amount of people and the quality of people that she has is part of this is phenomenal.
Dr. Patel, you know, you can't sing enough graces about what she's done in a very, very short period of time. The amount of people and the quality of people that she has is part of this is phenomenal. I'm just blown away by it. I mean, I'm here. No, I'm teasing, but she's done a fantastic job, and I hope that she does have your wholehearted support in this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And Councilman Hanson?
Great presentation, and, and all the work that your group has done. I've seen all the cars in the parking lot, meetings at your office, but this is such an opportunity to create another community amenity and get rid of some of the dirt in the downtown. So thank you very much.
Okay. If there's no other council discussion, I'll entertain a motion. You have a question?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, motion.
I'm listening. I'm motioning to request staff to work with the town attorney to develop a lease for the potential use of the property adjacent to the library as a community garden. The only question is, do I need to include anything in there about the water meter?
Probably.
And to include the installation of a water meter, and to what extent we can assist in the grading, leveling of the site.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second, and council discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any post?
Aye.
Ah, you got it, Alan. Hey! All right. That's the fastest we've ever given money away. All right. Okay. Then we go on to, okay, the next item, which is consideration of professional services agreement with Hunt and Caraway. This item was tabled from April 7th, and it's been moved to the May 5th council meeting. So now we go on to discussion with possible direction to staff related to anything with the legislature. Grady, do you have anything?
Mayor, I do not.
No, I don't think we have anything new to really discuss. We're still keeping on top of the bills and whatever's left, and waiting for their budget. Okay, then we are going to go on to council direction to the town manager, and I'm going to go to Councilman Brown on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Grady, I would like to see if we could put staff together and look at the possibility and study the elimination of drives and utility cuts from the disturbance calculations.
Yes, sir. We will, we will go ahead and evaluate this and come back with staff recommendation to address that issue.
And if possible, when you're having your meetings, if I could sit in, I'd truly appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other direction to the manager?
Sure. Keep doing the great job you're doing.
All right.
Thank you.
Everybody's getting applause. Why not Grady? All right. Nice job. Okay. Activities? I'm going to do my usual, you know, I had a couple come up to me and say that they, they record our meetings, and they like to watch them with their breakfast, so I thought that was kind of interesting. And they, and they said that their, the most, their most interesting part was my activities. They want to know what I do as mayor. Did you want to say something?
Real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Shout-out tomorrow at noon, Relay for Life, Fight Against Cancer at Fountain Park, right behind Fountain Plaza Site.
Yeah, and I want to, I want to thank Councilman Yates for, once again, representing the town at the event.
Thank you.
Is he running?
Saying, go.
Okay. Let's see. Senator Kavanaugh and I attended a 2016 Fountain of Youth fundraiser at the home of residents Tina and Tom Duffy. Very successful event that raised a lot of money for our branch of the Boys and Girls Club. We also represented our state and town at the annual Polish Festival in Phoenix, accompanied by Consul Borgemil and Elizabeth Horsham. This festival is very important, since our newest sister city is Zamos Polen. We had a ribbon cutting for Truffit Studios and a ribbon-cutting open house flag raising on the new VFW building.